Recording in progress.
Welcome to this continued special meeting on Monday, November 13th, 2023. This meeting is now called order. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
With pleasure, Mayor. Councilmember Hedges.
Here.
Councilmember Lorraine.
Here.
Councilmember Newsom.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Diaz Nash.
Here.
Mayor Lee.
Here. The business before council tonight is to take up the adjourned meeting from Monday, October 30th, 2023, and then adjourn to tonight, Monday, November 13th, 2023. As a reminder, council has taken public comment on this item, so the action in front of council is to continue deliberation from the October 30th, 2023 special meeting and provide direction on the land use element. Before we resume council deliberation, interim director of community development, Zachary Dahl, will provide a brief supplemental presentation to help facilitate this discussion. Good to see you, Zach.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Let me go ahead and get my screen shared here. So yes, picking up the conversation where we left it from October 30th, I'll provide, kind of walk through the contents contained in the agenda report and then available for any questions or clarifications you may need. There we go. So as noted for tonight's meeting, we are looking for direction on if there should be a focus framework to allow for projects to go up beyond high into the high two category, which is up to 10 stories or up to 200 units an acre in exchange for commensurate community benefits. And I have a couple of supplemental maps to help illustrate different parameters that could be used to incorporate into this framework. And then going back to the the original question, which is, should eight stories and 130 units an acre high two be the maximum limits established in the land use element? Or does the council wish to retain the high two land use designation, which is up to 10 stories and 200 units per acre? So for the first of the three maps that we prepared to kind of help visualize potential parameters, this one shows a quarter mile, quarter mile radius around each of our three Caltrain stations. And then in relation, you can see the boundaries for the 10 general plan study areas, as well as the current high one and high two land use designations that were incorporated onto the land use map. So we haven't made any adjustments. This was, this is all information pulled from the land use map that was published with the draft general plan in July. The next map, map B, shows a lot of the same information in terms of the quarter mile radiuses and the 10 study areas, but in this one, what we're doing is showing any parcel that's one half acre or greater and is either within or partially within that quarter mile radius. So that could be another parameter you may want to consider. And it shows the associated land use for each parcel that is that meets that criteria. And then the third visual map, C, it shows any parcels over half an acre in size, anywhere within any of the 10 study areas. So this just gives you an idea of how many parcels overall within our study areas would meet this parameter, as well as the other still showing that quarter mile radius. And then just included for your overall reference, this is the the draft general plan land use map that was published with the draft general plan. Another area where council had requested some additional information was the framework within current measure Y related to community benefits. And so for that first bullet, you can see the language in measure Y itself, which identified opportunities to go up to 75 units an acre or 75 feet in height or increase FARs in exchange for the provision of public benefits or amenities that substantially were substantially greater than code requirements. Two projects have utilized this framework. This actually goes back to the late 90s for these two projects. One was the Bridgepoint Parkway Offices. This is what's currently Sony Interactive, and you can see the list of community benefits provided for going, getting additional height for that project. And then the second one was the San Mateo Marriott. Similar, they portions of that building were allowed to go beyond the height limit, and then they provided additional community benefits. Both of these projects were, I believe it was 97, 98, 99, when they were approved and constructed. In our current draft general plan, we do have a policy and an action that that speak to community benefits. So wanted to highlight these as depending on where you go this evening, that could be folded in or built upon what's already in the draft general plan. So we do have a policy that kind of outlines the list of potential community benefits that we would be seeking in exchange for density intensity bonuses and concessions. And then we have an action that would be used to highlight community benefits via dashboard online. So this would include listing of any potential community benefits that were received, but also just showing in general, community benefits derived from development projects. So this would be kind of the comprehensive look, including elements, impact fees and other fees or contributions that a project makes. So it would include community benefits, but kind of goes beyond for this specific action. And then we did want to note, based on current conditions, and we'll be having this discussion further next year when we bring bring this policy forward with with our consultant to get your input, right now with state density bonus laws, it does not appear that there's a feasible framework to seek community benefits for a project with a with residential units, since they have multiple avenues under state law. And so really, a community benefits framework would really focus on projects that do not have a residential component, such as office or biotech. And then the third area, which additional information was requested, was related to AB 1287. This is a recently enacted state law, and it will go into effect beginning of 2024, which allows for additional density bonuses and concessions. And then this focuses on projects that have already maximized their their density bonuses and BMR provision under current state law. So if they've maxed out, which goes to that 50% density bonus max, and then they were willing to offer additional deed restricted affordable units, they would be eligible for additional density bonuses and concessions. And we do want to note that density bonuses, concessions, or waivers received under state law are exempt from measure Y and could, as such, go beyond the limits set by measure Y. I wouldn't say exempt, it's more preempted, since this is state law. So this is just a reminder where we are in the overall process, following tonight's meeting and council direction. We will move forward with publication of our of our final general plan, which would happen beginning of the year, and then we would come back for adoption hearings before the planning commission and city council in February and March of next year. So with that information, I'm just highlight kind of the focus of tonight's discussion and the direction that we are seeking. And so that does conclude staff's presentation, and I'm available if you have any further clarifying questions.
Thank you so much, Director Dahl. So now I invite council to resume deliberation on this item. Would anyone like to go first? Perhaps we could start with any questions that have emerged, given the new information on this presentation? Okay, Deputy Mayor, please.
Thank you, through the mayor. Deputy Director Dahl, thank you for building out our understanding of community benefit programs. And that will be a much deeper question, I know, next year, when we really say, what do we want to do? So when, just to clarify, when you say no residential developments really can be targeted with community benefits, given state density bonus and all that, that includes no mixed use projects, correct?
That is correct, because if you have a project that is both, has a residential component, a project could seek waivers or concessions for the non-residential portion of the project.
Okay, thank you. And the two projects, and I don't know whether you can provide feedback, since it was a while ago, that actually went through community benefit interaction, whatever the word is, I was interested in how the community was engaged, who were the people that were chosen, roles did they play, and what reaction or feedback did they have afterwards? And that may not be something you can answer now, but it would be interesting to know that.
Yes, unfortunately, I don't have have that level of familiarity with those two projects. I was doing some research and found a few agenda reports from back then, and I know there have been iterations of various community benefits programs that have been adopted by council over the years, but I don't know specifically how that suite of community benefits was ultimately landed on for each of those two projects.
Okay, well, that would be great to know at some other point. Then the next one is, is my understanding correct that our current community benefits program tends to be more capital focused than service focused? So as an example, childcare, you know, if you provide money to do capital improvements for childcare, that can be considered a community benefit, but operating a childcare center wouldn't necessarily be?
So right now, we do have have a fee that projects pay into that then provides a fund where the city can then help physical investment in childcare facilities, but right now that fee could not be used for for operation of a childcare facility.
And is that just a, that's one example, is that sort of a general? Is that a general trend in the way we do community benefits, like as opposed to in terms of capital improvements as opposed to services?
I would need to look into that further. I think there's any number of ways it can be done. The services piece is a little bit different in terms of how it could be, in theory, subsidized or how you would want to fund it, the relationship with the operator. I think it's it's much more, much easier to quantify and to track when you're talking about physical investments in a site. And we might then have to get more involved in, say, the business model of how it operates as opposed to supporting the the build out of a facility to get it up to code to meet requirements and then letting an operator go from there. I do know right now, when we have entered into an agreement where the city uses some of its impact fee or it's the fees collected to support a childcare facility, we do enter into an agreement where there is, I believe it's a minimum 10 year requirement that they operate there or that an operator operates out of that facility. So we do get an enduring childcare presence as a result of that investment, but we don't go into the actual subsidy of the operations itself themselves.
Great, thank you. And then my last question is based more on, we got a lot of letters this week, a lot of emails, and my reading of them, and talking with lots of people, is that the real concern in the community, or one of the real concerns, is not so much the height and density of a particular project, but the impact of that project. So on on daily life, quality of life, whether it's traffic, lack of open space, all sorts of things. So, you know, one of the things that the general plan really focuses on, as you've said, is developing everything, lifting all boats, not just doing the buildings, but doing holistic development. And that means everything that goes along when a new project comes in. And I'm wondering if it would be possible to for staff to look at strengthening language in the relevant areas of the general plan policies. So where it's appropriate and legally feasible, we can very clearly prioritize all aspects of of developments, not just buildings, and then, number two, areas most impacted by new development projects and prioritize them for related public improvements. So to really try and bring that up in the in the public's understanding and our prioritization.
Absolutely. If there's council direction on that already, that that is a theme of the general plan, and one of our 10 big ideas is that quality of life theme, where as we as we facilitate growth and change, that we look at ensuring that we continue to maintain the quality of life that goes with it, whether it's it's ensuring minimum service levels for various aspects of governmental services, infrastructure and that. And so we are already looking to support that theme throughout the general plan, but if there's any specific council direction to support that or reinforce that, we can definitely fold that in.
Thank you. Those are my questions, Mayor.
Thank you. And I'll just expand on the childcare operating expenses question, because during the pandemic, when when I was sitting in this seat, I helped initiate a childcare fund through the county, which provided 300 grants to to operating childcare providers in the form of, you know, grants from, I think it was $10,000 up to $50,000. And those were explicitly for one time operating fees. I've also seen negotiations with with commercial developments that help subsidize the rent of of childcare providers as a negotiated benefit. And and during COVID, we also saw, you know, saw the childcare industry, you know, come to the brink of collapse and and directed some of our own city resources to support rental assistance for childcare providers. Those are the only operating cost specifics that I am familiar with in terms of direct support to childcare providers. So there are models for that, but I don't believe that that has been folded into the the basis of our our community benefit framework, per se. I mean, childcare is certainly named as a as a key area, but I don't believe operating expenses have been explicitly tied to that that goal. Additional questions?
Thank you, through the mayor. Thank you, Zach. So if the community benefits framework that we've been discussing is not anticipated to be applied to developments with residential units, then what exactly do we believe would qualify for these out of the new parcels that are currently listed at high two on the land use designated map? Because I think we have an awful lot of mixed use, right?
We do. And within that mixed use designation, obviously, there's going to be future council discussions on how we look at mixed use and if we want to set, say, minimum densities for residential and mixed use, and there's some other questions there. But that mixed use designation wouldn't prohibit an all commercial or all office project from occurring there. So that doesn't mean that it has to be mixed use, it means that there can be a range of uses. The anticipated use is that you would have, I mean, you could have an all residential in that zone, you could have a mixed use project with both with a multiple uses, including, say, commercial on the ground floor and residential or office above, or you could have an all office project. So I think that type of project that does not include any residential could definitely occur in the mixed use land use category.
I see. So in a way, all the mixed use that's currently designated as high two could theoretically have community benefit framework applied to it if the development proposal in those parcels is commercial only or without a residential component?
That is correct.
Okay, I appreciate that. Looking at map. Let me see, which map do I want to look at? Looking at map B, which shows parcels over a half acre within these quarter mile transit radius. If the city were to allow parcels within those circles to apply for extra heightened density via community benefits framework, could a parcel that sits within any portion of this quarter mile radius conceivably qualify for height and density benefits within the whole parcel, as if the whole parcel were fully within the circle?
I, we would look to council direction on that. You could set a parameter that says the parcel must be entirely within that quarter mile radius. Any portion of it, and it could qualify, or say, 50%. So that's kind of council prerogative, if you want, how you want it to specify.
Okay, thank you. No further questions?
Isaac, you have a list of community benefits, is that exhaustive? I think the old council had brought this forward.
Yeah, I can't speak to if this is exhaustive. This was what I was able to pull, looking at prior agenda reports on this topic. So hopefully it is, but I can't speak for certain on that.
Okay, so I think the two biggest issues, correct me if I'm mistaken, that we have here is wastewater treatment, which is being corrected through what we what we're doing now, and then flooding, if we can get flood free San Mateo to pass. We're doing some remedial work on it right now, but nothing that would would not require more money. So as far as infrastructure, because that has been a major comment that I've gotten on email, it seems like there's quite a bit for transportation here. I'm trying to think what else we would need, because our streets and roads, although some need repair, are pretty much in, we're not going to have anything new there. Can you think of anything in infrastructure that we would have to either improve? Well, we need some improvements, obviously, bike lanes, things like that, which are already here, but anything else?
We've been, the, this policy LU 2.3, as we've been receiving community planning commission council support or comments, we've been building out this specific policy. So if there was additional specific callouts that council wanted to include, that could be added there. I do want to note, this isn't all encompassing, because when we actually move forward with this actual framework, there'll be that opportunity to have a much more specific conversation with the community and then ultimately with council on what you want to put in here, because I think the key is, is you'd want to prioritize. And it's also adjusting expectations that I don't know that we're going to see a huge number of projects here. So I know we've seen a lot of different asks to put them on as community benefits, but I think we also want to be realistic about how many projects would realistically utilize this program, considering we've had some version of it over the years, and only two projects have utilized it since the original Major H back in 1990.
There may be a third building at the crossroads that was built after Major H that I think might also qualify that they had benefit.
They could have, I can definitely research it. The records were a bit piecemeal back then, so I mean, this was as best I could, and I know the planning team was digging around as well. These were the only two projects we could clearly identify or found record of reference to, but if you think there's a third and you've got it, we can try to dig around for that.
Well, I don't think we have to dig around, just go over and count the stories. If it's over five stories, it had to have a community benefit. I think that's it for right now.
So can I just interject? I think what I what I hear is a strong interest to understand, you know, how community benefits that derive from this policy and previous conversations that council has had to, you know, enumerate community benefit priorities, how that will then come to to a full and comprehensive policy that reflects the vision of this entire council. So what is the, what is the process that we would undertake and what would the timeline for that be?
I'm sorry, for the the process and timeline for what would this be?
So I, what I heard from from council member Hedges, you know, is a concern that what might be listed here might be incomplete, which you confirmed is not fully comprehensive and, you know, and that, you know, that one single paragraph in our general, you know, general plan is, you know, is far from a fully baked, you know, comprehensive community benefit program. And so I think there is a lingering question here in terms of how do we go from, you know, policy LU 2.3 into an integrated and comprehensive, fully, you know, stamped, approved, ready to roll out program that that this council has bought into?
So we are looking at moving forward with that discussion in 2024. We are looking at minimum densities in mixed use. There's a couple of different programs. We have a consultant on board that's looking at the economics, and as part of that, we will be bringing back the community development, community benefits program to look at to see what what potential pathways, because I know we have an interim program that hasn't been utilized. So yeah, we will be following that discussion and building off of this probably next summer would be my my estimate.
Okay, so that's helpful to know for us in terms of the the development of the timeline happening in advance of anything going on the ballot, that we'll we'll know what we're buying, if you will, that that the community benefit program will, at that point, be much clearer and more formulated with all of our input. Is that, was that, did we get to that?
I think that summarized it. I actually do have a follow up to.
Just go ahead.
So one of the things that we kept getting hit with, both in public and also with emails, is supporting any public benefit that happens for development within someone's neighborhood or community to be utilized for projects, if it's feasible to do that, within their community, to relieve some of the stress of the the additional building. Is that something we could plan for?
I think, well, we've been talking about localized community benefit as part of the framework and the basis of the framework. Is that, so impacted, directly impacted communities and neighborhoods would would have a direct tie to the community benefit project? Is that, is that where you're going?
If that's feasible.
I think that's what we were talking about, and that's part, that was already part of what was conceived of and discussed at length when when my previous council was discussing in the community benefit framework.
What I want to put an end to is what's happened in my neighborhood, where a large amount of money was moved completely out of the neighborhood after all the construction took place there.
Yeah, so I think, as was noted earlier, the objective of this overall general plan, one of the key themes is that we are prioritizing investments in areas where there is growth and change. And I think if there's specific council direction on that, I know if I might defer to our city attorney for maybe some specifics on it, because we can't be too specific when it comes to how impact fees are collected. But overall, that's definitely the intent, is to ensure that areas that are seeing more growth and change, there's commensurate or prioritized investment to ensure that quality of life is maintained.
Yeah, and I understand it may not always be feasible to do that, but in cases where we can, we should be doing it.
Thank you, Zach. Just a couple of follow up questions, and you, we spoke earlier today, so I think I know some of this, but just to clarify. As far as the map goes, there are very few projects that that actually this could even apply to, right? From a perspective of, we've got Reimagine Hillsdale, perhaps, we may have a couple buildings in Bay Meadows, and then we potentially have, if they build something behind Station Park Green at at the Hayward Station, Hayward Park Station. Is that, is that accurate, or are there other sites that this could apply to?
I think it will depend on the framework. If if council goes this direction and sets up a framework, it could vary depending on the specific sites that are enclosed. And I wouldn't want to presuppose any specific property owner's interest or ability to move forward. But yeah, I think if you're looking at the quarter mile radius, Bay Meadows already has a development agreement for their building, so they probably wouldn't be looking in, there was, I mean, they're at the tail end of their overall development agreement. So we do know we have interest from the owners of the Hillsdale and that associated grouping and parcels. And and there's potentially a few other parcels, maybe to the the north of Hillsdale along El Camino Real that that could utilize this, assuming they're not going to include a residential component, because based on what we've seen, and obviously, we can't speak for certain, but based on what we've seen with state law and the various density bonus and concessions and waivers that are available, that appears to give projects what they need to get the density, height, other development standards they need to achieve their project. And so really, it's that grouping of projects that do not have a residential component that would be most likely to be interested in utilizing this as a way to get, I think, predominantly additional height is what we're talking about here.
I'm not sure I completely understand. It can't be solely residential, but it can be mixed use?
Yeah, so if you have a mixed use building with, say, office or commercial on the first couple floors and then residential above, and if you're meeting your minimum inclusionary requirements, let's say you're providing 15% low income units. requirements, let's say you're providing 15% low-income units, you could, you would then be eligible for concessions and waivers, and you could use those to, say, for the non-residential portions of the building. So maybe you're looking for higher overall height, but maybe that height is more realized in the lower floors, or reduced setbacks, increased floor area ratio. Yeah, so as long as you have a residential component that provides inclusionary housing to meet minimum state law requirements, your overall project would be eligible for those, say concessions or waivers.
Okay. And then, sorry, next question. Transition better. AB 1287 has a lot of people panicked, in the verbiage being up to 50%. But you and I were talking about that when we spoke earlier today. And is it ever conceivable that someone could come forward, you know, and say, well, you've got a height limit of eight stories, we're going to build 16? Or as you were saying, it's not likely, but is it possible that that could happen? And how would that have to work in order to pan out or pencil out?
So I think there's a concept that it could see, if you layer this new legislation on existing, you could in theory get to a doubling of your density bonus. So say you had, under current law, our current regulations, 50 units an acre, you could utilize this to get up to 100 units per acre. But that's not doubling, say, your height limit. You could, as a concession or a waiver, seek additional height. But there does need to be justification that those concessions or waivers are related to the provision of affordable housing. So I think asking for one or two stories is, would be fairly straightforward to justify. But once you get beyond that, say you're asking four, five, six stories, that's a much higher bar that a project would need to demonstrate. So could, in theory, they ask for it? Yes. But in reality, it doesn't seem very likely, given what we've seen with concession requests to date, and that kind of nexus of offsetting the cost to provide affordable.
Okay. So I mean, likely, if we had an eight-story height limit, it's unlikely it would surpass nine or 10 stories with all baked in. Is that?
That, yes, that's a fair statement.
Okay. And then, are we locked into what the community benefits are that are already designed? Or as council member Hedges was suggesting, can we say flood, you know, flood-free initiatives is also something that we want as a community benefit? Can we add, can we add to what these community benefits are, or is there parameters that we have to stick within?
Yeah, I think they are exactly that, community benefits. So this is the policy that kind of sets the framework that council is interested in moving forward with. When we actually have that policy discussion, then we would start to really lock in, what is the list? What, how are they prioritized? We would also look at, are there any legal limitations of what we can ask? But I think for the most part, because these are community benefits, and they would, they would most likely come with a development agreement, it can be fairly open-ended. So we could design a policy. I think we'd probably want to set priorities. What are the things we'd want to see most? But I would think that if that's an interest, and there's definitely a way to fold that in. And if council wanted to include it specifically here, to acknowledge it, or you could still include it when that more specific policy discussion comes forward.
Thank you. No further questions. Thank you.
Did you have any, yes?
Thank you, through the mayor. Just had one follow-up question from council member Newsom about, to flesh out AB 1287 a little more. Zach, you gave us a sense of the lack of likelihood of building tremendously high as a result of bonuses through AB 1287. And I just want to ask about the likelihood of even achieving a double density bonus with, by requiring a specific percentage of moderate units on top of the other below-market-rate units after state density bonus. Maybe could you just talk a little bit about, and just to clarify, we would need 15% additional moderate income units in a project, it appears, on top of the low, very low, or below-market-rate amounts that are currently being provided to achieve the, up to the maximum of state density. We need to max out state density. Can you talk a little bit about moderate units and like the city's history with filling vacancies of moderate units, and how they might compare or contrast to the low or very low-income units?
So yes, I think when it comes to moderate for rent units, getting them occupied is definitely a challenge. Because of the high median income within San Mateo County, that results in a rent rate that is not that far off from market rent. And so I think what we see is renters that would qualify or be interested in paying that price point, they're not interested in going into a deed-restricted unit, because then there's annual reporting requirements on them to verify income. And so what we usually hear is, most renters at that point would rather just try to find a place on the open market, because you don't necessarily have the same strings attached. We've identified moderate units as very good for, on the ownership side, because then you are getting into a bracket where you can realize real savings, because you have such a jump from that moderate price point for a for-sale unit to where market rate is. So our inclusionary policy focuses on when we have moderate units, having them as for sale, but if we have for rent, getting low or very low. But yeah, when it comes to for rent moderate units, there's definitely a challenge with getting those occupied. But also, just if I could add on to your earlier question about maximizing density bonus, right now with the city's current maximum density of 50 units an acre, I would say projects seeking a double dense, or going beyond the 50% density bonus, so they could, say, get closer to 100 units an acre, they, I could see projects being interested in that. With the adoption of our general plan, where we now see densities that could go up to 99, or say 130 units an acre, I see, it seems like that would lower the likelihood that projects would then max out on their 50 unit, 50% density bonus, and then still need more. They might still do this path for the concessions or the waivers. But we usually, we've heard from a lot of developers that somewhere in the 130 to 150 oftentimes is the sweet spot that they're looking for for density, for the units that pencil for them.
Excellent. I appreciate that. Thank you. No further questions.
Oh, council member Hedges, yes.
So I want to go back to two things, to 1287, just for a minute. It's my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, that the additional density bonus is just above the original density bonus. It's not for the entire project, because I'm getting emails that people think it's for the entire project.
Well, when you say entire project, do you mean inclusive of the non-residential portions?
I'm talking about if a building is coming in at eight stories, they don't get another eight.
No, that is correct.
So I'm getting emails that think it goes up to 16 stories automatically if you have an eight-story building.
No, that wouldn't be how it's applied.
Yeah, I agree with that. The other thing, just a remark, that it seems to me if we, and correct me if I'm wrong, if we raise the number of units per acre, we actually get more below-market-rate units, because right now we're held to the amount of 50 units per acre.
That is correct. Right now, we calculate our inclusionary requirement off base density. So yeah, if we go from 50 units an acre to 100 units an acre, we're now doubling the number of affordable units that could be realized off of that project, because a larger chunk would be off base density. And you can see it in the numbers. Most of our projects come in at around 10%, because the density bonus units they get, you don't have to provide inclusionary off of those.
So it would seem to me, then, that if you're going at 100 units per acre, that the amount of below-market-rate units you should get, it might actually dissuade somebody for going for a density bonus, because it costs money to put in, put in below-market-rate units for the low, low rate.
It does. Usually, at that point, for projects that aren't necessarily looking to maximize their density bonus, they're probably looking more at being eligible for concessions and waivers.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And at this point, this is purely speculation, how this bill will actually be implemented in the city of San Mateo. Is that right?
I think the scenarios are speculative, but I mean, in terms of how it's applied, that's based on how the law is written.
In terms of the impact and how it becomes operational here, we have no, we have no way of knowing, because it has not yet come into effect, right?
I don't want to say we have no way of knowing, because we do know what the law says. And so we're reporting on here, what we're highlighting, these are realistic pathways that could be utilized under state law. I think how a project ultimately uses them, and whether they choose to maximize, or whether they take portions, or what concessions or waivers, yes, those are more speculative. But in terms of what a project is eligible for, the additional density bonuses or additional concessions, that is based on state law. So I would not call that speculative.
So am I reading this correctly, that this law, AB 1287, it only becomes really applicable when the maximums have already been met, the state density maximums have already been met?
That appears so, yes.
Okay. And how, when have you seen, or how often do you see our projects maximizing statement, density bonus?
Right now, with our current density limit at 50 units an acre, we do see a lot of our projects maximize the density bonus they're seeking.
Would you be able to quantify that, you know, more specifically?
Not specifically. I've looked at a number of our projects. We've, I think it ranges, our housing element does provide a more exhaustive list. We do see a number of projects going for the maximum. We also see projects kind of falling within the range. Oftentimes, they're at least at 100%. But we do have projects that are maybe, say, getting 35 or 40% density bonuses, but not going all the way to the max. And then we did have a mixed-use project downtown that did not fully utilize its base density. But oftentimes, for projects that are looking to provide residential, they do go to the max, because we do have a relatively low base density for the size of community we are.
Okay, so you're saying, you know, oftentimes, usually, that is the case, but we don't have a way of actually, or we don't, at this point, know or have not calculated or quantified exactly, like, for example, in the last three years, how many of our projects have maxed out on density?
I can pull it up. I don't have it in front of me right now. I know our housing element has a table that goes over each project. I believe we looked back four or five years, and there is a kind of a table that identifies percentage of base density starting. And I know, and the point there we were highlighting was that almost all of our projects are at 100% or more of the base density. So just about every project that we've seen over the last four or five years has utilized density bonus, but not all of them have maximized their density bonus.
Yeah. And so I mean, I think that's an important distinction for us in our learning to really understand how these laws are then applicable, because this is this law, which I know has caused a lot of consternation and concern, it only triggers if density has been maxed, right? And we know that that has not always been the case for the projects in, say, you know, the last three years. I mean, I'm looking at Poston Beam, Bespoke, Drager's, 435 East Third Avenue, all of them have not maxed out on density. Drager's, for example, had zero density bonus. 435 East Third Ave had zero density bonus. Bespoke had 3% density bonus. So, you know, I think it's important to, you know, when we're having conversations about how state law actually is applicable here in this city, to know with more information and full information about how it would apply. And so to think, you know, to presume, or, you know, or to, you know, to base concern on, you know, impartial information is, you know, is something that I hope we as a council can try to manage with better and more full, comprehensive conversations about how these laws could then be applicable in our city. You know, and I think, you know, I appreciate council member Lorraine raising the issue about mod income affordability being, having a higher level of vacancy. I mean, that, from my, from my conversations with Sandy Council, you know, the previous housing policy manager, housing manager, housing manager, you know, she, you know, at least during her tenure, and I hesitate to speak on her behalf, but, you know, from what I've learned from her, many years of service, you know, for the city, was that moderate income housing was, A, very hard to fill, and B, that the city overall had a, you know, had essentially a guiding sort of policy to discourage, actively discourage developers from producing mod income housing, because the acute need is low and very low income housing. And so, you know, to, again, you know, just in terms of our conversation, and looking at, you know, where AB 1287 might be applicable here in terms of the affordable housing production ranges, focusing specifically on moderate income housing, do we as a community really prioritize moderate income housing as an acute need for a community benefit? That would, where this could be, you know, a solution to our affordability crisis? I personally don't see that, given the history of how hard it is to fill affordable housing units in the moderate income range, and the fact that our city, over many years, has discouraged developers from producing moderate affordable housing. And correct me if I'm wrong, interim director Adal, you know, is it the current practice right now to actively encourage moderate affordable housing? Has that changed?
Yeah, our current inclusionary policy focuses on moderate and low for sale units, and low and very low for rent units.
So you're saying that since Sandy Council was in the, in this, like, with the city of San Mateo, we have changed our policy so that we are actively encouraging moderate income affordable housing production for rent?
No, for sale.
For sale.
For rent is focused on low and very low. For sale is focused on low and moderate.
Okay. And so for, you know, AB 1287, is there some specification about for sale or for rent that I'm missing here?
Right now, it seems to highlight for rent moderate.
So under current density bonus law, the moderate units that are provided, those are for-sale units in order to achieve the current maximum base density bonus. But then what AB 1287 does is it allows for the additional affordable units to be either for sale or for rent moderate, in addition to the very low-income rental units.
Okay, so it's either or?
It's either or. It's either the very low or the moderate. But in the moderate category, what's new is that you can get, you can use, or rather, provide moderate income rental units in order to achieve an additional density bonus. So that's a change in the law.
Okay, thank you. So, okay, so switching gears, I guess I did want to ask about the, you know, what is the, let me reframe. So when Dr. McClarney did our most recent statistically valid survey of likely voters, to understand what the community's support would be for High One and High Two, he put it very eloquently, I thought, and very simply, is that we have to find a place for housing, and it's either zig or zag. And that we're either going to have to upzone, or consider upzoning and study upzoning citywide, or we look at concentrating growth within the, within the study areas, which are along the transit corridor. So, you know, so I think that it's helpful for this conversation to, you know, just to be clear about, you know, what the counterpoint is. If we don't, you know, if we don't pass a general plan at the ballot, what is the, you know, what, where does that leave us?
I guess I would look, so when you're saying if we don't pass a modification to Measure Y, I mean, we do have to have a Plan B outlined in our housing element, and so we would need to look elsewhere around the city for how additional density could be achieved, if that's the answer that you're looking for.
So we would have to look citywide at options for potentially upzoning?
I think we need to look for additional capacity around the city, and rezoning would be one of those likely avenues. But that would, that's specified in the housing element if there isn't a successful ballot measure to modify Measure Y.
Okay, so those are my questions, and are we ready to deliberate?
Sure, I am.
Would you like to begin?
No.
Council member Lorraine.
Sure, thank you, through the mayor.
Sure, thank you, Thud the Mayor. I think I'd like to just throw out some thoughts on the maps and the conversation that we are continuing from the last evening on the 30th. I just wanted to get a sense, maybe get this conversation started again about what might be applicable for this community benefit that we've been discussing. We have before us some maps that show a couple of parameters for determining qualifying parcels. And one of them being a quarter-mile within transit, and another being projects a half-acre or larger. And I guess I would just, I think I'd like to speak in favor of potentially pursuing one or the other, but maybe not necessarily both of them together. I think that that might mean, given the previous conversation, that we end up with something closer to the quarter-mile around transit rather than all throughout the map. And I think I would be okay with that, with two sort of notes. One would be that I think it would be important to allow the owners of parcels that are within the radius at all to be able to propose a project that could take advantage of those community benefits within the whole of the parcel. I do think if we don't do that, then I really think we're talking about a very small fraction of what we had before. And I think there's an opportunity, that doesn't feel like selling out to me. I think if it's within, this is a smaller circle than we were looking at before. And so we're really talking about being very close to transit. A quarter-mile is, I feel like it's a short walk. And so if a piece of this parcel is within a short walk of transit, then I think a developer could come up with a meaningful project that facilitated the, an entryway from transit and potentially shows a project that can take advantage of that and have that in the design of the whole parcel, even if some of the parcel is a bit farther away. And so I think it would still be able to fulfill the kind of needs and drive behind this idea. The other note I would make is that I think, I would like to get the council's thoughts on considering projects, parcels, rather, that are smaller than a half-acre, but within the quarter-mile. Because when I look at the community benefits framework that has been developed to date from the previous council in conversations, and with the knowledge that we can continue that conversation and add on to it if we are so inclined. When I looked at the current list, I saw a number of potential community benefits that I think are, could feasibly be offered by a developer of a smaller parcel. I think, in our previous conversation, I had in my mind, for what it's worth, that there might be interest in community benefits that were maybe more tangibly proximate to the exact parcel. You know, I guess one of the examples that is on the list might be the Linear Park at Bay Meadows, right? So that, you do need a large enough project to have part of that project provide the community benefit itself. But we also have contribution to public parking fund, payment toward traffic improvements, and even just monetary contribution to the city. And those are potential community benefits that smaller projects could deliver. And that might mean that there are opportunities to obtain revenue toward services or capital that we need and that people around these projects would want and could get benefit from. And so I would want to throw that out there because otherwise, we might be leaving potential revenue and benefits on the table. And I guess that would be particularly true near the downtown Caltrac Station. We have a number of smaller projects there that if we were to only focus on units, or rather, parcels, half-an-acre or above, I actually am not sure that there would be any qualifying projects in the downtown transit area. Because there's some in here, but it's existing, right? So Mills Hospital, for example, the Peninsula Regent, I think, is in here. Those are already built, so those wouldn't count. So those are my comments, for now.
So, just to reiterate, so you're suggesting all potential parcels within the quarter-mile?
Yes, thank you.
Additional thoughts from my colleagues? Councilmember Hedges.
So I was unclear on the heights you were talking about in that quarter-mile. I didn't hear you enumerate that.
Oh yeah, that's fair, especially given the question. I think we were already just looking at, effectively, parcels that were indicated as High 2 before, right? So maybe like High 1 only. So I guess, not, we wouldn't be allowing just any parcel within these transit areas to apply for community benefit, but rather, the ones that are already listed at High 1. I think that's where we left off last time, and I'm comfortable with that. So that would be my, maybe to try and reiterate what I was getting at, I would say parcels of any size that are already listed as High 1 in these transit areas of a quarter-mile, and with the added caveat that if any portion of this parcel is within that quarter-mile, all of the parcel within it could potentially apply for benefits.
At this point, I think 1287 has sort of changed the discussion on the heights. There's a great deal of fear out there now about us going up to 16 stories. I don't think that's ever going to happen. But when you have High 2, and you can do a density bonus of two floors and then another 50%, we're getting up there. So I'm, because of understanding 1287 a little better, I'm probably going to stick on High 1 for the two train stations at Hillsdale and at Hayward Park. Because I think 1287 has actually raised the likelihood of heights going up. So if you want to respond to that, feel free.
Can I ask you a clarifying question? Were you thinking about a parcel-size minimum or a radius around the train stations?
What do you mean by a parcel-size minimum?
For the community benefits discussion?
I would like to see community benefits, whatever goes in. We already have them listed.
So I think, I thought, okay, so I think the framing of the conversation was about discussing community benefits that allow for greater height and density, and what the criteria would be for eligibility of opting into a community benefit program?
Well, with housing or mixed-use, probably, there's not going to be a request to go any higher for community benefits because they can already, through state bonuses, go higher. So it would only be with office buildings, I would think. And quite frankly, office buildings, and the more jobs we create here, the more housing, jobs balance that we have issues with. So I think that the community benefits, if somebody is going to ask for more height for office, would only be around office buildings. Other than the ones we already have listed. So that's where I'm at right now, see if anybody can change my mind.
Thank you, Thud the Mayor. I think I was the first person who sort of started this whole discussion last time and caused us to continue the meeting, so I thank my colleagues. I thank my colleagues for doing this, and I really want to thank staff because I think this was a very important discussion to have because there were lots of questions, both about what could community benefits be, who would they apply to, what was AB 1287? I mean, I walked out last time being very confused. I'm certainly not an expert now, but I think I've had a lot of my questions answered. I've spoken with UZAC and City Manager, and everyone in this room, probably, and many people in the community. And after doing all that, I'm actually less excited at this time about the opportunity than I was a week ago. As I've heard time and time again, developers don't seem to be as interested in agreeing to community benefits to increase, achieve increased heights and density. Staff is saying probably it isn't an opportunity for residential, so we're really looking at commercial. And as Councilmember Hedges mentioned, we have a lot of discussions in this community about how much commercial do we want? And I think there's a lot of value in commercial, but we have to do it in just the right way. Staff is saying that community benefits haven't been used a lot. Doesn't mean they can't be, but we've got to re-figure what it could be, if that was to change. Residential developments seem to have a lot of headroom due to state law for increased heights and density without community benefits. And the community, just if you try and parse through everything, as I said before, seems to be most focused on how do we alleviate the impact of development, rather than, if they had to choose, they would rather get rid of some of the traffic than have improved landscaping, which was one of the things that used to be the case. Now, of course, everybody wants everything, but I think that's what I'm taking away. I think it has been a really good conversation, and I think Councilmember Hedges and Councilmember Lorraine have come up with a lot of good suggestions, which to me says, the community benefit program discussion that we have in the summer will be really valuable, and I would love to really open it up and say, what's relevant these days, what can we offer, what doesn't make sense? And I would really love to get involved with that. But I think it is now, in my mind, premature to set specific long-term policy in the general plan based on what we think the community benefits program is or could be, without a lot more community discussion. And as you've told us many times, the general plan is a living document. And as we grow and as we realize or have different experiences, we can come back to it. So for now, I think, I now believe that the best way forward, as I said last time, is that we use H1 as the maximum height limit throughout the city for residential mixed-use and commercial development. And I would also like to see the city strengthen language, as I said earlier in my question, in relevant areas of the general plan policies so that when appropriate, legally feasible, and whatever parameters need to be adhered to, we prioritize all areas of development, not just the buildings. In your terminology, it's holistic development, cohesive development. But we think about everything, not just what's going up and then what do we do about it afterwards, which I know you're doing right now. I would like to encourage strengthening that. And number two, prioritizing the areas, as I think some of my councilmembers have said, most impacted by new development projects. I think that was part of your thinking, Councilmember Lorraine, for related public improvements. So that, if, improving the clean water program is going to help everybody, for sure. But if there are opportunities to, that are feasible and accomplished, to be able to really look at the new development projects and prioritize benefits that can help the communities nearby, then that's what I would recommend we do. Thank you.
Sounds like we might be having trouble with Zoom and getting into the meeting.
I just got a text from someone who works for the county, and they can't get into the meeting.
I have 10 people attending in the meeting, so people are appearing to be able to get in.
Okay.
Why don't you send him my contact, and I'll work with him?
Do what?
Send him my contact, and I'll work with him.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so I heard from the deputy mayor, High 1 max, not consideration, with no consideration for community benefits?
At this time, and also strengthening the city language around areas most impacted by new development projects for related public improvements and prioritizing those.
Councilmember Hedges. I mean, sorry, Councilmember Newsom. I always call you Councilmember Hedges for some reason.
Just two handsome devils. You're not a handsome devil? All right, okay. So where I was last week, or two weeks ago now, was I was comfortable with H1. What I was hoping to hear this week was, you know, potentially, for the quarter-mile around the rail corridors, if we could do H2 in those areas based on, you know, community development bonuses. I was very hopeful, and I was naive, that that would be housing. And what I'm not hearing is that it really isn't housing. It's, I mean, it's mixed-use, but it's not, we're not going to get a lot of bang for our buck. So I haven't moved very far from where I was two weeks ago, where I'm comfortable with H1 in these development districts. But I haven't heard enough to go in with H2 for the quarter-mile. And I'm not closed out on this yet. If somebody can convince me otherwise, I'm still listening. But that's where I am now.
Please, go ahead, Councilmember Lorraine.
Thank you. So I'll try to focus my comments here on the questions we have since other councilmembers are answering them. Should there be a focused framework to allow for projects in specified areas to request heights up to 10 stories and/or densities up to 200 units per acre? My answer would be yes. And I think the, you know, what I would like to add for Councilmember Newsom and my colleagues to chew on is, you know, I share Councilmember Newsom's, I think, disappointment that as we're digging into this, there may not be a lot of meat on this bone. Because if a mixed-use project has a residential component, then it wouldn't necessarily qualify for these benefits we're talking about. They do have access to state density bonus, and they may have additional to seek, but they wouldn't be able to get this. And so we're really just talking about if a mixed-use project were to have a commercial component. component and not a residential use, then we're frankly probably not talking about that 200 units an acre part, right, of housing. We're talking more about requesting heights. But the way, like, there might be a pathway to obtaining some housing as a community benefit from that commercial building in return for allowing some height. And that is something that we could continue in the conversation on community benefits to come. You know, like, one idea for that might be requesting a land grant from the developer that could be repurposed into housing in some sort of partnership, as we're seeing with Alta Housing and Harvest Properties downtown with bespoke and the city providing the land. We could, you know, I feel like those are the, like, there might be other ways we could, you know, in a future conversation, sort of have the community benefit that comes from this be tied to increasing housing. So I guess that would be, you know, something I wanted to provide, and that would be why I'm saying yes, even if this is just really focusing on potentially commercial developments. And I guess with regard to the other one, maybe I will just comment on it. Should eight stories and 130 units an acre be the maximum limits established in the land use element? You know, frankly, you know, after digging into these options, I am a little more disappointed with, you know, what High One might be able to bring when in contrast to High Two. Through our deliberation tonight, we, you know, the mayor mentioned a number of projects recently before even going to larger maximums that have not sought maximum density. And I think if we were to, you know, go to High One in some of these areas, you wouldn't necessarily have, I think that the possibility that those maximize their density is lower. And that's, you know, that's when you start getting into a sense of the difference in the ranges and what they might mean. There was some discussion of calculating our inclusionary units from base density tonight. And so, you know, I think that causes me some discomfort and pause because if we settle on High One, then, you know, and we're not seeing projects maximize their density to get density bonus and, you know, getting some more units in return for below-market-rate units when they're maximizing, then, you know, the number of below-market-rate units we might see in a High One project may be significantly lower than in a High Two project. I think part of the idea that we're talking about in this deliberation is that it's more comforting to settle on High One if it seems that developers are going to maximize it and ask for more height and end up at 10 stories. And I think if that were the case all the time, then indeed, we might be in close to the right spot. But if we're not, then we're leaving a lot on the table. So I think I just wanted to throw that in as food for thought. I guess I will say that I do know we have a number of council members here who are pretty set on High One. So I would say that, you know, I'm okay with it.
Can I please try? Can I take a swing?
Sure.
You know, being the chair, I have to wait till everyone's spoken to speak, but, you know, this is a process I've been involved in for five years. Yes, I was part of the original committee. I helped draft the vision as it's written today. And as, you know, I've mentioned before, I lived in affordable housing. I benefited from affordable housing. And so, you know, this is not an abstraction for me. This is a lived experience. I was couch surfing when I was 16 years old. So the point that I hear Councilmember Lorraine making about consideration of our opportunity to create as much affordable housing as we can with the understanding that the thing that we can control is our base density. That is the lever that we have to pull. That is the most important lever. And I have to say, I felt really uncomfortable coupling this conversation with the conversation around AB 1287. For five years now, we've been in a process that's involved thousands of community members, a community-wide statistically valid survey, a statistically valid survey of likely voters, millions of dollars in contracts, and hundreds of thousands of dollars of city time and staff time. And I have never seen our conversation about our own land use planning get derailed by one state bill. That has literally never occurred. A state bill that has never been actualized in this city. We have no, we have, we have nothing in the way of implementation perspective to base this conversation on how we see this bill interacting with our city. And so, you know, I want to state my serious concern about coupling our, you know, our conversation about our own city's land use planning with, you know, our concerns about how this bill is going to impact the city. I can tell you right now, SB 9 had people, you know, in red alert. We have never seen an SB 9 project in the city. Sorry, SB 10. We've never seen an SB 10 project. We have seen two SB 9 Lotswood applications. So, you know, we have a history of, you know, of being highly sensitive to, you know, to concerns that in some cases have proven to be totally unfounded. And I just, as somebody who cares about process, right, who's been in this process for five years, I don't want us to come to a conclusion because of an outsized concern for the impacts of a state bill that has literally never been implemented in the city. What our concern should be is what are our leading affordable housing advocates telling us? What are our leading affordable sustainability advocates telling us? What are our labor leaders telling us that they support? And how can we, as a city, get close to delivering on the promise of affordable housing, recognizing that the one lever that we have is base density and community benefit? I can tell you right now that my community in North Central, my community in North Central has been most impacted by gentrification. The community of African-Americans that peaked in 1970 has been diminished by 42%. That is two out of five black people are no longer a part of my community. We lost a 100-year-old black church pilgrim Baptist that had to relocate because of declining congregation. My community of North Central has been disproportionately bearing the burden of growth and disproportionately bearing the burden of displacement. And so as a person who cares about equity, who is listening to our sustainability leaders, who's listening to our affordable housing advocates, who's listening to our labor leaders and who's saying, we have an opportunity to deliver affordable housing, community benefits, we need to look at the bottom line, and the bottom line is base density. That is our bottom line. That is what we can control. Councilmember Hedges.
Councilmember Lorraine, I share your desire to have more housing. I think unless we can build 20 to 25 stories, we're not going to get a lot of tall buildings. If you remember when we went through Kikuk Crossing, the foreman that addressed us or the leader there, I may have the wrong title, said, when you added those extra two stories, you cost us a lot of extra money. So what we're seeing when we're going above five stories is usually a podium of concrete and steel for two or three stories. The tallest one in Redwood City right now is eight stories. So unless we can go much taller even than High Two, you're not going to see a lot more height and density because it has to be a lot more stories for concrete and steel. So I think that you're absolutely right. Because of the cost, this new bill will probably not result in a lot more density in stories, simply because of the cost to do it. And if we can't do it, and it's financially not, then why have it, which causes more consternation with some of the older people in the community? Because most of the people I know that are, that I see the emails from that I know are my age or somewhat less. So when it's not going to benefit us. So I think High One will work for us. I think we will get possibly some eight stories. I doubt if we're going to have much density bonus even used on that because then they have to spend a lot more money to build it. So if we can't get it, then why wave a flag in front of anybody? So that's kind of where I'm at.
I think my only, what I'd like to add there is, I think I agree with you on the residential side. So it is, I think we've discussed a bit at length about some of the limits of the heights of these residential projects. And so maybe when we're even talking about High One versus High Two, eight stories versus 10 stories, that there may not actually be feasible 10-story residential projects. So then why bother, right? I think the answer that I've heard is that when we're talking about mixed-use projects, it may be that we need that commercial piece of a mixed-use project to be higher than eight stories to allow for enough residential in that project to pencil out. And so I think that's the story that we've seen in, I think when, I think that's, I guess that's what I wanted to contribute there, and I think the mayor's comments about base density are important there as well.
And I will just add that, you know, we're, this is a 20-year plan, right? And so construction practices are not frozen in time. We know what's happening today, but we don't know what will be invented next week or five years from now. This is a 20-year plan. And so I would just caution us to be trapped in the reality of today when we are trying to advance a vision of our future, which is unknown. Our future is not yet known. And the conditions, the market, and the technology advancements that are coming, we do not know and cannot possibly predict. I lived in the day when the phone was attached to the wall with a coily cord that would be tangled all around me. You used to type on a typewriter, right? Or was it hieroglyphics? Just kidding.
Actually, they had crank phones at my grandfather's house. Yeah, I lived in a different age. But I also, you talked about living below-market-rate housing. I lived in a house where I went to bed every night worrying about it burning down.
Okay. Thank you for sharing that. I mean, I think it's important to bring our lived experiences into this conversation. So I guess that is just to stay, you know, to bring this back to this conversation. We are doing a long-range vision. I mean, if you compare it to Toianaka, this is a drop, this is a blip, right? We're not doing 200-year plans as, you know, one day we'll get through, hopefully. This is a 20-year vision. But to make a decision based on current market conditions, current construction practices, when we know that we're planning for a long-range vision and that technology and advancements in, you know, like, just how long ago was, what is that? What is, I'm totally spacing on the name of the engineered wood. Mast timber, thank you. Thank you. Mast timber was not a thing, you know, not that long ago, and now it's a thing. Right? I'm just, the point that I'm making is that over your lifetime, over all of our lifetimes, just since I've been on council, there's been significant advances that we could not have predicted. And so I just, I want to invite everyone that's a part of this conversation to join me in the visioning process that we have been, you know, that we are honored to be part of and be deciding votes on. So please, you know, please bring yourself and your vision here to this conversation and don't get pigeonholed to what we know today.
Through the mayor.
Please.
Councilmember Lorraine, actually, you've made some good points about the commercial buildings, and I made the motion to downsize the office from eight to five stories. I would be willing at Hillsdale and at Hayward Park to reverse that and go back to eight stories with a sizable community benefit for housing. So I think you make a good argument on that. Would that satisfy what you're looking for?
Well, I think, I mean, I remember you asking for a reduction in straight office before, and I think that's been reflected in the land use plan. And, you know, given that we don't have a lot of straight office anyway, you know, I think that's a matter we can set aside. You know, I think what we're looking at is an awful lot of mixed use that will have this commercial with the residential. And honestly, I'm sort of hoping that a lot of this mixed use includes housing, right? I think it's fine to have this discussion about possibilities for commercial projects within these study areas, within these quarter-mile transit circles, but I would say that ideally they would instead be mixed-use projects that have a residential component because we're going to need it for our arena. So I guess one other point I wanted to just throw into this discussion is, you know, I think we've heard a lot of concern from the public about the difference, you know, about the about the threat of state density bonus law effectively increasing the heights of what we're discussing tonight by two stories, right? So that when we talk about High One and a limit of eight stories and 130 dwelling units per acre, what, you know, what we're really talking about is 10 stories and more because of maxing out state density bonus law. But the mayor did bring up a point that we aren't necessarily seeing projects continually maxing out density bonus and seeking those extra stories now. We are seeing some increases in heights to projects, and as Zach mentioned, you know, we are seeing projects end up at about maximum base density or perhaps a bit higher. But it's not quite, you know, we're not seeing a ton of seven-story maxed-out projects now. And if we were to increase the parameters, I think what we're, you know, I certainly believe that we would see fewer projects totally maxing out and trying to go higher than the parameters. So then, if that is the case, I would look back at the survey we had and see that there was a strong majority of folks in our city that were interested in and okay with 10-story developments in the sort of focused study areas that we have in this draft plan. And if that's the case, if we're not worried about those 10-story projects turning into 12-story projects, for example, then maybe High Two is the best fit.
I just want to remind you that we have a development downtown that's going to have over 60 units of below-market-rate housing that's working with two developers. And with Bay Meadows, we've got an acre of land plus 10% below-market rate, plus an acre of land to build below-market-rate housing. So when you do do office, and by the way, there's nothing over five stories in Bay Meadows. In fact, it's only 35 units per acre on the housing. So when you, so there is a possibility with raising the office heights for money or cooperation in building below-market-rate housing, that we could get some developers to weigh in on it. I think probably a better chance than extra heights. So that's why I changed my mind, because, and when I went to five stories and the office were asked to do that, I was really doing it with trying to keep our arena numbers, like you were talking about, reasonable, so we're not completely chasing this forever. But if we could get more housing out of it, and that was a specific reason for doing it, and developers would weigh into it, then I would be for it, because then we'd be solving that jobs-housing problem with the office.
Can I make a--
Please, I'm done.
I guess I just want to better understand. So I hear movement from Councilmember Hedges openness to greater heights for commercial with community benefit. Is that accurate? Specifically, community benefits to specifically being affordable housing? Okay, I appreciate, I appreciate your clarification on that. And I guess I just wanted to remind everyone who has all toured Kikue Crossing, right? Everyone on this dais has toured Kikue Crossing. Everyone on this dais--
Except for Ron. He was with--
So everyone's aware of this project. I think everyone shares an admiration and support for this project, right? I've heard from multiple members of this council how, that this is a shining example of San Mateo at its best, right? That project was only, that project, at the caps of Measure Y, would have produced 60 less units of affordable housing. The density of that project, correct me if I'm wrong, Director Dahl, is around 200 units per acre. 200 units. That's a project that everyone on this side of the room has openly and publicly applauded, lauded, congratulated our city for. It is 200 units per acre. And the only reason that we are able to get 60, over 60, additional units is because of a state law that allowed us to go up two floors and produce 60 more homes for people That project has a work-live preference for Samiteans. It has a designation for municipal employees, for formerly homeless, for veterans, for people with developmental disabilities. We, sitting up here on this dais, cannot at one moment say, "This project is a shining example of San Mateo at its best," and then, with the other hand, shut our door on affordable housing because we are limiting base density. Do you see that contradiction?
Can I please jump in here?
I wish you would not interrupt me.
I would love to be heard at a certain point. Thank you.
I am asking my fellow colleagues to listen to the experts in our community from, who are affordable housing developers. The experts in our community who are sustainability leaders. Your comrades in arms from Labor, who are saying what our community needs is to open up the door for opportunity. Base, setting our base density at the highest possible level allows for more affordable housing, which is what we all agree is a shared goal and priority. A community benefit program that leverages additional height and density for the purpose of bringing localized benefits back to our community, bringing more affordable housing back to our community, allowing my neighborhood, for example, the opportunity for a project, a naturally occurring affordable housing project, to be acquired and deed-restricted permanently for affordability and allow my neighbors to stay in place. Those are the opportunities that we're giving our community when we say yes. That is what we are deciding tonight.
May I speak, Mayor?
Yes, please, go ahead.
Thank you, through the mayor. I think we've had, number one, a really good discussion. I thank everyone for that, and I completely agree with the mayor that we certainly do not want to make a decision tonight based on a state bill that's just been passed that hasn't been implemented. But I do think that we have lots of experience with, over many years and many developments of what developers have wanted, or community groups have wanted. Something like Kikue Crossing, which I agree is a fantastic project. We're currently looking at going to, if we go to H1, that's eight stories. That's already tremendously more, and it's within a certain area than what we have today. And then there are density bonuses on top of that. So we have the opportunity to build, and I think we should go with what we can build and what we have seen with experience can be built, and aggressively go out and talk to the community, talk to developers, see what is happening, so that if something changes in the future, I go back to the fact that the general plan is a living document. If in five years, something magical happens and technology changes and costs go way down, then of course we need to come back and talk about that, because that is reality. But today, the economics the Councilmember Hedges talked about, that is today, that is for several years, the opportunity to do so much more with H1 in these study areas that we have developed, I mean, it's tremendous. It's already so much more than what we can do today. And obviously, we have to talk to the community and get community buy-in for whatever we want. And if there is not support on the ballot, then we will have to look at where we find development throughout the city. But I think we have a huge step forward that we're making by going to H1, and I want to be successful. And I don't see that, I appreciate Councilmember Lorraine's ideas about land trusts and the like, I mean, that's what I was talking about all week long. It would be fantastic, but I don't see that there's economic interest today at this point in that type of thing. So I would encourage us to continue to have those conversations, find ways to go forward, agree to H1 tonight, and then if there is something that really changes, we can come back and look in however long it takes. But this is for today what we can do, and it is a vision. It's a vision that says, "We are going forward. We want to aggressively focus on opportunities for affordable housing." This is not saying we want to cut anything off, and this is really looking up and down the corridor. And as I said, there are lots of other things we're going to have to do to even make this successful. So I would strongly make the argument that this H1 would enable a lot of affordable housing. It could enable a lot of moderate housing. It could enable the right amount of office and commercial. And we want to be able to support our business partners as well. And I think it's a very solid plan, and I think it's a good one.
So I hear from Deputy Mayor that the pleadings from our sustainability community, our affordable housing community, and our Labor community have not changed or moved your original position of support for H1 as the maximum, and that you're not considering community benefits as part of this conversation. I take issue with the portrait that we can quickly come back to this with, you know, and that this is a living document that we can revisit when we know that we are setting policy that will be going to the ballot, to the voters, that we are setting a land-use map that will go to the electorate to make a decision, right? And that that is not a small undertaking.
Absolutely.
So I also want to, again, clarify that if we cap our land-use map at H1, then we are leaving on the table the potential base-density inclusionary affordable housing that we could get with H2. Without consideration for any community benefit program, we are leaving on the table localized community benefit that could bring us more affordable housing, that could lead us to more funding for the 200, last I counted, $239 million of unfunded capital improvement I am really struggling to understand the resistance when our multiple statistically valid community surveys, including one of likely voters, supported High Two. I'm struggling. I'm struggling to understand the resistance when the 30-plus-year policy of Measure Y has a community benefit program that the community has bought into. I think that there has been an acknowledgement that it's been underutilized because it had been undefined for multiple decades. However, I hear a strong commitment from our community, from our, not from our community, but from our council, to define it, to realize it, and a process that's been laid out for that to actually come to fruition. So I'm truly struggling to understand the resistance and what I hear to be direct contradiction are stated values, our commitment to affordable housing, the accolades for a project like Kikue Crossing that has 200 units per acre. That's four times the density that our existing, our existing policy allows for, and is not even, you know, it's, we're only talking about a handful of parcels that are around transit, that are within the study areas. The study areas themselves were a great compromise. The study areas that we defined through five years of community input, saying, "We've got to put all these Lego pieces on the board." And we hear you, we want to protect our neighborhoods, right? So help me out here, Councilmember Hedges.
So I actually had a conversation with someone who's in the below-market-rate industry, and they told me today they doubted if anything's going to be built over eight stories, no matter what we do in housing. And that's not something I led the conversation on. When we go to eight stories, we're raising the density and the height by 130%, and the height limits by 62.5%. That's substantial, and I'm very concerned. Yes, High Two uphold at about 59%, but High One at 72%. There will be campaigns that are put on, and I'm worried about tripping over dollars to get the pennies. In other words, we're tripping over what we can get at 62.5% and 130% to get something that we might lose. And so I'm actually opting in the side of what I think is a given that we'll be able to pass, and I'm not so sure about High Two, and I'm not willing to gamble. So that's where I'm at. I'm at, this is substantial increase in these study areas than what people are used to in the city. And so I think it's a big gain for what we're doing.
Are you open to High One with the opportunity for increased height and density attached to community benefits?
Well, I think on housing and mixed use, the state's pretty well ruled that out, community benefits. Our attorney can tell us that if I'm wrong, but it would have to be with commercial development, like I'd proposed to raise it to eight stories. And I'm not against it, I just don't think we get it unless we do commercial.
Okay, so I hear, I hear High One from you with community benefits, which you think will largely be applicable to commercial.
Right.
Can I ask, I, you know, I heard Councilmember Lorraine suggest a quarter-mile radius from transit stations. Can you get there?
I was an eighth--
Sorry.
I was an eighth of a mile, but I'll go to a quarter.
Okay, I'm at a quarter. I hear--
Mayor Lee, can I just interject for a second? So, you know, the council should also be aware that under existing state law, you know, there's the development, the density bonus we've been talking about already.
The what? I'm sorry, I missed--
The density bonus we've been discussing already. There's also perhaps less frequently used, but still existing state law for commercial developments, and it refers to allowing commercial developers to partner with affordable housing developers to develop affordable units either onsite or offsite within certain parameters in exchange for receiving perhaps increased height, reduced parking, increased FAR. So that was under, I believe it was AB 1551, that was enacted as of January 1st of this year. So, and you know, perhaps the, either Zach or perhaps Christina can speak to whether or not that's commonly utilized, but that's an existing mechanism under state law, so any kind of future community benefits program that the council wishes to create would need to take that into account.
That's what I was talking about persona with the, with raising the commercial back up again to eight stories.
Right, and I think-- Right, and I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but I heard from our interim director that we will be going through a process to define community benefits in summer of next year that presumably will have a much more in-depth look at relevant state laws, right, than what we can possibly fit into this conversation right now. So, you know, I appreciate your, you know, your inclusion of additional information. I guess I just see that as part of a larger and more in-depth conversation and process that council will go through. And so I hope, you know, I think we're closing in on some consensus, and I would like to return to that conversation.
And through the mayor?
No, I'm sorry. I really would appreciate if you would not interrupt me.
I would.
Thank you. So what I heard from Councilmember Lorraine is a quarter-mile, H1 with a possible community, with an interest in community benefit program within a quarter-mile radius of transit. I heard, I see nodding from Councilmember Hedges. I am there as well. Councilmember Newsom, not Hedges, Newsom.
Just to clarify, we're talking about H1, but within a quarter of a mile of the train transit or the train hubs, going up to H2 with housing as a specified community benefit.
That's what I heard.
I'm not going H2 on anything. We're all.
That's all right.
Already at H2 on housing with the benefit where H2 is, if the developer decides to take that bonus, H2 and above. So no, H1, and then the density bonuses will take it to what it takes it.
Through the mayor. Maybe for clarity's sake, so what we're looking at right now is that, from what I'm hearing and looking for, nodding heads or consensus too, is first and foremost, what I'm hearing is a base layer of H1 overall, but then when you're looking at the quarter-mile of transit stations specifically, I'm hearing Hillsdale, Hayward Park, I didn't hear anything about downtown.
I support downtown.
I'm in for downtown.
No.
I just don't think there is anything downtown.
I don't think there is anything downtown, but.
But what I'm hearing is within that quarter-mile radius, what you would be interested in is basically looking at, you're at H1, but if there is some type of community benefit on the commercial side of things, solely, purely, commercial, that has to do with housing, that's where you would be, there'd be some interest potentially, moving for additional height.
Right, and to make that worthwhile, that would have to be above the H1.
Just keep it on.
Just leave it off.
So I'm trying to respect everybody else's microphone by trying to get off. Okay, so I think we'd have to have the commercial at H1 as well in order to make that meaningful.
So you'd have it at H1, but if there was a community benefit, then you could go pierce H1 and go higher, knowing that that community benefit is for housing, specifically affordable housing.
Yeah.
That would have to go above and beyond the state bonuses.
I don't know what you mean, but.
What does that turn you?
This is where Prasanna was talking about.
So I think it would be helpful to understand, this question for Councilmember Hedges, you're comfortable with H1, you said, and you've expressed some concern with H2, but then you've also expressed some interest in going beyond H1 under certain circumstances.
Well, quite frankly, with the density bonus, as you get from the state now, you're above H1.
Okay, so just can I take a step back for a moment? Because I think, you know, we're at a continued council meeting, and I think staff is looking for some direction because they need to put the general plan together.
Sure.
And they need to put it together to bring back to the council for adoption hearings and for publication for adoption hearings in February and March. So, you know, I think what we're looking for is a majority of the council to provide direction on, is it H1? Is it H2? Is it H2 in some areas? Or, because there's been conversation, deliberation kind of going round and round, but I haven't heard sort of a clear, precise direction from council.
I think we're trying to, we're trying to get there, and I think that this, you know, these clarifying conversations are important, because what I heard was that there was consensus from Councilmember Lorraine, myself, and Councilmember Hedges, that we were comfortable with H1 plus a community benefit option for increased height and density for commercial properties that prioritize affordable housing around the transit stations.
Right.
A quarter-mile from the transit stations. So we're all there?
And so the only point about density bonus, we're not going to get anything out of housing in mixed use. So is it, it will go higher if somebody wants it to go higher. It's doubtful it will above H1, but it may. But you may go higher with office if they want to, because that's where the money is really, for developers, that if they want to use a density bonus, if they give us below-market-rate housing.
I appreciate you saying that, and I think that, you know, what I've heard from our council and from conversations with you is that we have a job-housing imbalance regionally. We don't, as a city, want to significantly contribute to that by overproducing commercial. However, we do want to continue to see our community be economically viable, and if we do support increased commercial and jobs, then we want to see direct community benefit.
Which is housing.
Which is affordable housing. Okay, so I think that's. Can I ask, can I ask for Councilmember Newsom to weigh in?
Well, I think I stated exactly what you just said. The only thing that I said that you corrected me was, I was saying, well, therefore you're advocating on H2 because of the bonuses. So you're already going to have urban density bonus, if you add on the community benefit, now you're in the range of H2. So you don't have to call it that, but you're basically talking about H1, and then with density bonus and community benefit bonuses, you're in the height range of H2. Am I wrong, or am I missing something?
You're automatically in it with H1 if the developer decides to go with the density bonuses the state allows.
Okay.
So was that your position? Or I, I'm sorry, I didn't, I'm not sure I understand your position.
I was stating that I was okay with, with H1 and with, in the quarter-mile of the rail corridors or the rail, the perimeter of the circles, going up to, you know, going beyond H1, provided that there was housing as a community benefit.
Okay.
So that's where I was, and the only thing is, I misphrased, is I said, well, which would be H2, and then everybody's like, well, no, 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 but it is H2, because when you add the community, the community bonus benefits plus the density bonus, your height range is now falling in H2. That's the H2 range.
But it's not, because those same density bonuses could be added to H2.
Sure, okay.
So it's not H2.
Okay, so I heard four, Council, Deputy Mayor.
What, I think it's interesting, because this is what we were talking about last time, and actually, that was the proposal I had made to focus on commercial, and we've come full circle. But I guess I would not want to just have it be affordable housing, because if there was something else, if there was.
Daycare.
It could be daycare, it could be traffic, and I guess my question is, what do you need? How specific do you need us to be tonight? Because if we just say, it's commercial within a quarter-mile, and there's the opportunity to some kind of benefit, but H1 is the base.
So I think it's helpful to look back to the staff report and the questions in the staff report where it ends with, should there be a focused framework to allow for projects in specified areas to request heights up to 10 stories or, and/or densities up to 200 units per acre, H2? So whether you call it H2, whether you call it H1 plus with community benefits, I think a basic question is, what kind of density, what kind of height are you looking at as being, by whatever mechanism you get there, you know, what is the consensus of, at least the majority of the council?
130 units per acre. That's what H1 is.
If we're talking about a community benefit that largely applies to commercial, we're not talking about units per acre.
That, I think we're talking about community benefit that only applies to commercial.
Yeah.
Right, so it wouldn't be defined as units per acre.
Yeah, the housing, it's not going to make any difference.
Through the mayor. I do want to also provide some clarification on this. The council did provide direction to staff, and it was folded into the general plan for office, it's at five stories. So the window seems that if you could then go five to eight in community benefits for a pure office project and still stay within that overall eight-story height limit.
That works for me.
Through the mayor, I would love to include the fact that it's not just affordable housing. If this is an option, our developers may choose to take it, may not choose to take it, but affordable housing is clearly a huge priority. But to your point, mayor, if they decide they would rather make a contribution to helping us realize our Central Park Plan, or, you know, the pedestrian mall downtown we're talking about, so I would, I would not want to limit it, but give them, you know, a range of options, but have it be quarter-mile within Hayward Park, Hillsdale, commercial only, H1 plus, as Deputy Director Dahl suggested, adding on, so that it goes up to a maximum of eight stories for commercial, as with housing with bonus.
Because right now, in the general plan for mixed use and residential, we have those height ranges and that, in H1, it's five to eight stories. For office, purely office with no residential component, council directed staff to limit the height to five stories. So that is the window where community benefits could come into play for those non-residential projects, is allowing that five to go up to eight in those specified areas.
I like that.
So to jump in and.
We need to make a motion.
Trying to get, there's no motion, actually, I'm just looking for a direction overall here. And so what I'm hearing is, is H1, that'd be the height limit that we're looking at. The offices that are, the office limit is at five stories, I'm hearing, on select properties.
Your office has five.
Five stories, but there could be, it could go all the way up to eight stories, should there be a community benefit. And we don't have to decide on the community benefit tonight, you already have policy that kind of gives a overarching of what community benefits there could be that we can utilize to articulate what community benefits are. I've seen it in childcare, housing, transportation, there's everything that Zach had on the slide, I believe, right? It's not all-encompassing, not exhausting, but it gives a really broad, high, kind of holistic view of what we're looking at. And I just want to go and hear from the council, is that kind of, can I see nodding heads of just where we're at?
So if I could just insert one thing here, when we did the imagining, I was part of that team with Park and Rec, there is a provision for future building at the park in Bay Meadows with a large segment of that building going for childcare. We have no money to do it. So I agree with Councilmember Nash that maybe housing isn't the only thing, because if you have housing but no place to leave your children, and you have to get in the car, nobody's on the train. So childcare close to those areas where we're allowing the density bonuses should be a priority too.
Okay, can I ask for a thumbs up for a broad community benefit program that goes beyond just affordable housing, that will be defined through our stated process in the summer? We clearly have a lot of shared interest in many things like infrastructure and storm-water management and, you know, and transit improvements and childcare, and so this is not the time to define all of the things, but the question before us is, you know, is do we want to take a broad approach or a narrow approach? So thumbs up if you want to take a broad approach.
Can I make one amendment to your?
Can I ask?
No, I would really appreciate, because I don't want to put my thumb up or down without saying this, and I think it's important that this going on commercial from five up until eight is focused a hundred, a quarter-mile around Hayward Park and Hillsdale and not downtown.
I agree.
Can I, can I return to the original question that our city manager has asked us to define, which is, are we interested in a broad approach for a community benefit program or a narrow approach specifically focusing on affordable housing? Can I ask for a council input on that so we can move this conversation forward?
Broad.
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 Broad, okay.
I think they bring us a medley of things, and we choose from that.
We are very, we are in unanimous agreement about that, okay? What is the next decision point?
So community benefits, I'm hearing it's broad. The next question is, are those solely for purely commercial developments?
Yes.
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 Got it. And then which train stations, so we're talking about a quarter-mile of transit, from what I'm hearing from the council, which transit stops? We have Hillsdale, Hayward Park, and downtown.
Not downtown.
Not downtown.
Can I ask why? I literally, I am struggling to see the reasoning.
I just don't think it fits, and plus, it's pretty well-built out, so I think it's a waste of time.
So I hear Hayward Park and Hillsdale for Councilmember Hedges.
Same for me.
Okay, for Deputy Mayor.
Deputy Mayor Nash, yes.
I, I mean, as someone who lives within walking distance to downtown, this is a 20-year vision. This is looking at future opportunities, wanting to concentrate our height and density around transit. I, we are one of, I think we're the only city in the peninsula with three transit stations.
Yes.
I don't, for the life of me.
The only city along the system.
I don't understand why we would eliminate one of our own transit hubs for consideration. I literally can't think of one reason.
I can give you one.
I don't understand why that is even a consideration. We agree that co-locating our height and density around well-resourced areas that are, that have high-quality transit is the direction, is the future, is aligned with our value system. We have an opportunity to fully realize that vision in every single transit station in our city. We have one of the oldest thriving downtowns. Why would we cut off opportunity in our own downtown? I don't understand.
We've already got H1 downtown, and quite frankly, the oldest buildings are not in Baywood, they're along Delaware and around downtown, they're very historic, and I don't want really tall buildings hovering over them.
The historic district downtown is already carved out.
Oh, I'm talking about along Delaware. There's homes along there over 100 years old.
So I think we should just.
Long Delaware is not within the quarter-mile.
Yes.
I would suggest we ask for what we think.
Again, Deputy Mayor, I really would appreciate you speaking through the mayor.
I appreciate the opportunity to speak, mayor, thank you.
So in order to just see what consensus is, I've heard two say no to the downtown. Councilmember Lorraine?
I would like to add downtown if we could get a majority.
So I have two for downtown.
It's on you, big guy.
Councilmember Newsom.
No.
Okay, so then we're looking at Hillsdale and Hayward Park, from what I'm hearing, from the council this evening. Then going on to the next, those are all, so we're looking at a quarter-mile, where purely commercial, you can have a community benefit, and you can go above or pierce, you can go higher in those areas for those two transit stops, Hayward Park and Hillsdale.
Up to?
Five to eight stories specifically, and with some type of community benefit. Right now, it's capped at five. If you give a community benefit, and it could be broad community benefit, whatever it might be, then you could go potentially up to eight stories for those two southern transit stops in the city.
And H1 is the baseline for the city.
And then H1 is the baseline for the city, for residential specifically. Do I have, just H1, so that's my last one, is how you get clarity. So H1 for residential throughout the rest, throughout the focus areas then?
Yes.
I support. I support H2.
Councilmember Lorraine?
I, I think in the interest of supporting a compromise, a unified front toward a plan that will pass a ballot measure, I support H1 with the overlay that we were just discussing.
Okay, so I see nodding heads from a majority of council going for the H1 throughout those focus areas specifically. Okay, so what I'm going with, because I have to go tomorrow, I'm meeting with the ballot measure consultants, and so I have to articulate our next step. So where we're going is, we have H1 in our focus areas as the next. When we look at commercial specifically, within a quarter-mile of Hillsdale Park Station, Hayward Park Station, you can go from five, which is the cap right now, up to eight, if you give a broad community benefit.
In commercial.
In commercial only. Yep. Okay, so I have clear direction of where I need to go in our next steps. Zach, do you have any other questions?
I think that gives us the information we need to move forward with.
Okay, so just next steps for us, I'm just being very clear, for the city council, be meeting with ballot measure consultants tomorrow evening or late afternoon, and so I'll be taking these next, this information, and then we'll be coming back to the council early, probably early in January, most likely, with the next steps.
Thank you so much. All right, meeting is adjourned.
No, I have a comment I want to make.
Oh, okay, not adjourned yet. Councilmember Hedges has a comment.
So I received a hate-filled mailer from what seems to be the folks that have Zoom-bombed San Mateo meetings twice. Of course, like the Zoom-bombing, the mailer did not list a real name of an individual. Let me tell you now, you can't intimidate me. I've dealt with people like you from the 1960s on in trying to keep people, give people their rights to be in a place they want to be in. So you could, so to make sure you know, I would like you to come by my home anytime to have a discussion about your abhorrent ideas. My address is 904 Warfside Road, San Mateo, California. You cannot make me or any of my council fearful of you because you are despicable cowards. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, and with that, we will adjourn.